Proposed ordinance rezoning one parcel of land contained in 4.66 acres located on the south side of the Alabama River approximately 600 feet southeast of Lower Tonka Road.
Yeah, that's it.
Number three?
Yeah, this is Brantley's district. Clay knows about it, I know about it, we're good.
Alright, I think, well, they're saying number three on number two.
Number two.
Number two.
I don't know about three.
No, no, we're on number two, it says council district three.
It's two now, when we read district, it's two.
It's two.
Okay.
We're not, we're not trying to cut Marche out.
Alright, so you're good with that?
They told me though.
Alright.
What, what, what line is that?
It's a building.
He's good?
The only thing I have question, and I'm good, let me say that first, I'm good. But my only question is, I wanted to know, because the people who came down here, I remember them saying they don't have but one entry in and out of that community, and they wanted to be able to have a second entry.
Is there?
But is there any kind of way the city can secure a right of way or something that they can kind of build a street to carry this out on it, so that we can security?
Is Chris here? Yep, is Chris here? Well, Chris was actually working with me, it's a street that kind of goes through, it's not a street, but it could be a street. Yes, a dirt road that goes through Boston, and, but we didn't have the funding at that time, so it's possible to do that with some funding. Uh, I would have to look back, I think it was something like 67,000, but, yeah, but we didn't have that, because it was at the end of the budget season that time, and we never revisited, yeah. But, um, I'll kind of follow up with him, because I mean...
I think it would be great, so we can, these people can at least have their second interest in this being, whatever they want to do with the rest of this property, if he's already given them that permission, you know, I just, if we did, if we can't...
He'll be here in a minute, yeah. They're going through now, now on a dirt road.
Yeah.
Right, but if we can pave it and make it an official road, so that, because if it's a dirt road, we can block all posts, or somebody will buy, they can do something with it, the people back down here get, and we have the same battle.
Habitat used to own that.
Right.
Habitat used to own it, and then they sold it to him, and...
Here we are.
Yeah.
But when they invited, they came down here one time, a big group of...
Well, they had an understanding, according to the owner, that if, he let them go through, they'd be fine with him getting a business license, so he lets them go through. But I agree with you, a paved road would be better.
Right.
It would actually make his property more valuable.
Right, and it was secure that if you want a new property owner to purchase it, there won't be any kind of, well, I didn't make that agreement with you, and now the community kind of stuck in that same...
Well, he'll be here, just asking, you know, can he deed it if we, if we, if Marche paves it?
I'm fine with that, we'll discuss it at five o'clock hour.
Mr. Protan?
Yes, ma'am.
Point of order. The president just came in.
So we need to switch up.
Unless the president wants you to maintain the chair, I need to know for the record, so I can put in there why he comes in and he's not chairing, so...
We gonna switch up.
Okay.
There you go, hand him the gavel. You can switch up.
I apologize for being late, but when you have situ problems, it's...
Ed Fleming got your parking place.
Yep.
I might need my voice later.
Alright, number three, right?
Number three.
We gonna do that, we gonna do that at...
Yeah, I have Major Rockford's, well, no, I got Armstead now, Major Armstead, but anyway, I have this report that was given to me.
Okay.
Will you talk into your microphone, we're not hearing you.
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry. Um, I have a report that was given to me a couple weeks ago about the different calls out there, I think this may have been just in like a four-month timeframe, they had 83 calls, two murders, five subjects with the gun, and then I had a call from Major Armstead just a week or two ago, and she was having a conversation with the property owner, and I was on the phone and could hear that conversation, and it really didn't seem like he understood that MPD could not be his security system, and I know that conversation was had with the office manager that was here at the last meeting, but he was almost under the impression, that's the way he was going, MPD is gonna take care of his issues, and so we need to make sure we have a clear understanding of where we're headed, because security is still an issue out there, so I just asked the council to give me a little, a few minutes to kind of talk with them, to make sure we're clear in our understanding of what we want and what we need for the citizens that reside there and that surround that area.
Mr. President, I have a question on that, and I agree with you, Ms. Graham, but where are we going from this? Because I know we do show calls and review, and everybody's talking about the same security issues, and always asking about off-duty police officers, but we, you know, I'm pro-enterprise and business, so, you know, we need to start promoting, pushing these people to get private security companies.
Oh, yeah, that's what we told them, MPD told them, and at the last one, that they could not be their security system, they had to get a private company, so we need to see if they've done any, you know, lead work to secure some private, if we know somebody, maybe we can recommend it today if they haven't found something.
And on that, the last thing I would say, you know, we got this issue in Montgomery, what happens, it happens in all districts, even with you, they sell the property, and we don't be notified as the council or as the license division, even though with the new owners. We had a situation over at Rosa Park, where we couldn't contact the new owners, because they sold it, and we had no idea, so I've been talking with the license division, and try to get something to come up where we can be notified, and a property inspector can go out on these apartment complexes before it even be sold, or we can hold up a license being issued from the citizen's name.
Mr. Protan? I have, I'm working on it now, it's in the hands of Mr. Crump, and I have a ordinance that myself and an attorney is trying to work on, I hadn't got approval for that attorney yet, so that's what we, we've been working on it for about a month, once we get that approval, you guys will see it within the next two weeks.
Work the ordinance, that's what attorneys do, they defend what we do.
I got, I got to get contract signed first.
Well, and then while we're talking about apartment complex, I'm sorry, just to...
No, no, I was just gonna ask a question, when these sales require, you know, can we require inspection? I don't know that we can, Stacy, can we, if somebody sells an apartment complex, can we require that they have an inspection before the sale goes through, that the city gets to do inspection, see if it's up to code or not?
That's before a business license, maybe not before the sale.
Well, I mean, well, we don't want, if they can't get a business license, we don't, they don't need to have a sale.
Right, and I think you're saying what I'm saying, Mr. Grimes, is we've got to require, if you're gonna sell the property, it needs to be notified, especially something of, you know, we can put a ordinance, or we can put something on, I don't know if we have to go through the state, if it's a multiplex complex, like apartment complex that move, not just one property or two properties, but if you're selling something, we need to know, because ultimately, we're responsible, like that fire situation, if you couldn't contact the owner, or get, you know, the fire alarm system off, because it just continued to ring, 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 and we had no, and we did not know from a city standpoint.
Right.
And we get the calls, who owns it? We have no idea, because there's no requirement on these multi, these apartment complexes to come before the city council, or even the city to say anything, we can do what we want to do, we want to see a change, we just come up with an ordinance, and then you put that on books, and it has to be enforced, so if you sell it, it's something that, it's a flag, and you have to get this approved through license division, and it comes out and being inspected, because that's the problem that we have, because these people buying these properties absentee, living in New York, never see, and it's a write-off. It's a tax write-off, now you come in, now you got a million dollar worth of damages, and you can't receive rent in order to cover what you got to put into the building, and that's why we have these absentee, in these situations that we're faced with.
Mr. Protan?
Mr. Mitchum?
I have addressed, Mr. President, I have addressed all that and that ordinance, the only thing, like I said, I'm waiting on that, that contract to be signed, so...
So it sounds like we got something to work.
Yes, we do.
Thank you, sir.
Well, and before we move on, Mr. President, I don't know if this council is aware, but I was told, and I think Mr. Washington is kind of trying to look into it for me, but the St. Jude Apartments, where the seniors are, they have given those seniors 30 days to evacuate those apartments, because we don't know if they've sold it, we don't know what's going on with it, but where are we gonna put those seniors in 30 days? So I just think we got a problem up there, and I don't know how the city helps or anything with that, but they got to have somewhere to go, and we don't want to see them hung there. Mr. Washington, were you able to acquire any information on that, those St. Jude Apartments?
No.
Okay, thank you for looking into it.
How many people, Audrey?
About 60.
How many?
60.
Wow.
Yep, okay. Number four, the public key would have that at five o'clock, the system review boards, then number five is actually the carryover, okay? Number six, rental hall on East Patton Avenue?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Um, I'm not for, I'm not for any new rental halls, we have a rental hall issue, as we've discussed before, and the applicant wasn't here last time, so, um, I have a lot of issues with it.
I think we got, it's definitely getting dangerous, but, okay, number seven, number seven?
Mr. President, that's me as well, I've talked to Ed, I also have issues with it, we, we set a precedent about eight months ago, I think, not but 50 yards, 100 yards away for a liquor store, and we denied that, so I, I have an issue with that, it's already a fragile area of the district, and I just feel like we don't need a liquor store there, I would entertain another classification or have a conversation about it, but not a class two package.
Okay, number eight, I understand that the county commission turned this down as well?
We can discuss it in the regular meeting, if you don't mind, Mr. President?
Go do that.
Yes, sir.
Number nine, Mr. Pruitt?
You know, I think all y'all got the email from Stacy, you know, and I don't want to take it off the agenda, because I don't think that we're addressing the issue, so, I mean, I'm open for discussion, I don't, I don't know what, what, what needs to be done or can be done.
Oh, yeah, you got this, bring it up.
Mr. Pruitt?
Sir?
Just based on number nine, we did have a conversation, the president and I, and the mayor and his staff, about, well, it was on the staff call, about the possibility of going back to those speed cars that we had in the community that was blocked at the state legislature by Senator Brubaker, so we do have those cars in inventory, and I don't know whether they marked cars or unmarked cars at the time, but it's something that we was talking about.
They were marked cars. They were black and white.
I think that was one of the things that came out, that they were unmarked cars, but we know why it was killed, but we do have, and we discussed putting those back to try to offset, help with some of this speeding, deter some of this speeding by, with those speed.
Oh, I'm all for that, we gotta get legislation, and...
I think, yeah.
We can't just put them out, we gotta get, we gotta get legislation.
You hope, but that's...
Right, that's what we had to do for the red light cameras as well.
Yeah.
But what, I can't remember Stacy, as we go back, when Senator Brubaker moved on those, for whatever reason, you know, we know the reason, but, you know, I guess, you know, I think we have a friend legislating, now, that's something that we're trying to do, with the complaints that we get as a council about speeding in the community, and what Mr. Pruitt is talking about, we just want to change behavior, write tickets for the ones that's not doing the right thing, and as we move forward, so this is an opportunity, because I understand we still have those vehicles in our inventory, so it does us no good, other citizens just sit down on a lot, where we can be utilizing.
Well, and I wasn't involved in it, but as I recall, there was litigation about them, and there not being an enabling statute, I say that, and I'm just speaking based on memory, just hearing general conversation, but I'm happy to look into that and see why we had to pull them, and get that information to you.
Well, let me ask a question, can we just put them out, CC, just put them out right now, just for fact, I mean...
Hey, if it was up to CC, yes.
Yeah, I mean, just put them out, so that we'll slow down, they'll think it's a car.
We need to talk to chief about, put them out.
Just put them out, I mean, I don't care if anybody gets a ticket right now. What do we do in the meantime?
When you said just put them out, I mean, just put them out.
Start back operating.
Yeah.
Because we still have those red light camera, cameras up there, but, you know, they're not really mine.
It's not enforceable. Let me, Mr. President, okay, Mr. President, Councilman Pruitt, as we talk about the flow of traffic, I wanted to see if we could include, or start working on something about like ATVs?
Whoa, wow.
And eighteen wheelers, we really gotta get a hold on an ordinance for that, to really define about the eighteen wheelers in the neighborhoods, and then we need to define and write something out thoroughly about riding ATVs.
I think, some of the police department here, I see Chief Arms, we have something today, I mean, we have a law on the books that you can't ride, you know, ATV, not, what is it, chief, can y'all, can somebody help us with this?
All-terrain vehicles.
They have to be street? Yep, we're not, we're not pursuing them though.
They're not legal.
We need somebody.
I think what we got, if we got a problem with the number of them, from what I gather, if anybody know about that, any of the police department know about that?
So what's the, we're...
They don't.
Because they be all on, I, I, well, around, you know, I was like, I don't know, I'm used to them on the phone. You can't ride them on a public roadway, that's how we have them on the bus.
How do we stop that?
You can do an ordinance.
No, no, if you can't ride them on public roadway...
Well, we can't, if you're on the public roadway, if we can get them stopped, and that's the problem, we're trying to get them stopped, so that we could write the ticket to ordinance, or go ahead and confiscate it, but we, the problem is chasing them, trying to get them to stop, and so that's where we're at.
I think that's in there where the chief sent me to look at, for the future, about these, these all-terrain vehicles and all this speeding and doing that, where we go in and confiscate them, and make the fines so high where you can't get them back, so I think that's what I've been reading on that, and I got halfway through.
So do he?
Share it out with the council, so everybody can look at what he's thinking about doing, the speeding, the do-nuts, and all this stuff that we face with, so...
And then there's one other part that...
Also, with the ATVs and things of that nature, they're not street legal vehicles, so therefore, they're not authorized to have a license tag on it, so you can't operate on the right of way, so what happens is, if you happen to catch somebody that's riding, it's an automatic tow and a citation, if you catch them on the street, however, in this particular case, like the chief said, if you catch them on the boulevard, and you got multiple ones going down, and we get after them, the liability is a lot, a lot more dangerous than it is to stop them, but they're not street legal vehicles, and you cannot put a license tag on those vehicles, so they're not to be operated in the street.
Major, when you talk about, Major, when you talk about liability, what do you, what do you mean, liability for...
Well, it's just like our pursuit policy, it's just like our pursuit policy, if we get behind one, and he refuses to stop, at that particular time, we're not gonna chase someone in the middle of Eastern Boulevard at night on a four-wheeler in traffic, because there's a liability involved in that.
Mm-hmm, understood.
And also in residential neighborhoods, when they're...
That's when they're out there, now they're winning.
Right near downtown street, that's the issue, trying to get them stopped.
And I think the perpetrators know that.
They do, and they know that. That's why they're out there, so that's why I'm saying, if he has something that has modified it, I'd like to see it, so we can do something for them.
Yeah, I would say that.
Mr. President, I have a question, and this is for Stacy, if we have a policy that we can't engage in chasing the four-wheelers, if that four-wheeler were to kill somebody else, a passenger, a pedestrian, would the city have liability because there was no enforcement at all?
Um, you know, unfortunately, it's always impossible to predict what a court may do, because the courts will interpret and, and change their position, unfortunately, on constitutional rights, as it stands now, no, I don't, I don't have any issues at all, in fact, it's a greater liability if we do pursue them and something happens, whether it be they're in an accident, and somebody else's is killed or injured, a passenger on the ATV is injured, something along those lines, I mean, that certainly opens us up to liability, and we actually have a couple of case lawsuits right now dealing with that.
Charlie, can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
Stacy, something in this, something you told me when we were standing here, that there's a policy that Montgomery Police Department has, that makes my ordinance, I don't, not legal, did I hear that correct?
Well, it's, it's not that your ordinance makes it illegal, or their policy makes your ordinance illegal, and I'm sorry, I'm trying to find where my verbiage was, it's the verbiage of their policy, and, and it's correct, that when they're working, when law enforcement officers are working an off-duty job, they're not doing it in their official capacity as a law enforcement officer, and, and that's specific and intentional, they are working in, correct me if I'm wrong, they're working basically in the capacity of a security officer, just like if you were to hire somebody, a security officer from one of these certified, certified security officer, that's what they're doing, the difference is, if as a law enforcement officer, they then observe a criminal act, they have a duty to respond, at that point, they become, they are then working in their official capacity as a law enforcement officer, if they're executing an arrest.
How did we used to do federal overtime? Federal overtime, I know, used to be given to Montgomery Police Department to enforce traffic laws in particular places.
But they're working in a law enforcement capacity, they're working in overtime details, so they are on duty as law enforcement officers, and I'm not sure of the details, but I believe we get grant money, or they're paid by the federal government to work that overtime, so they're still working in a law enforcement capacity, under the umbrella of the city, when they're doing that.
Stacy? So I have a question, can we change, you know, because we all know it's a need, is it, is it possible that we change the wording on this ordinance then? Um, huh? I meant to, to, what number is that?
Well...
What is his name? Number nine, yeah, because it says off-duty, can it be an extension of overtime versus off-duty then? Or, you know, that's what I'm saying, do it have to be?
That would be the chief's call.
That would be the chief's.
It wouldn't be the same, I think your, if you answer to it, it's overtime with the officers are on duty, but what I understand now, we got a lot of overtime already.
Yes, we do.
That's, that's an issue that the chief's got to resolve, though, that's not, not one we can resolve, we got to get tickets up and whatever, but I've asked the chief in a meeting the other day, for all of us to receive the exact same statistics that the chief and the mayor have.
Okay.
So what you get will be, what we all get will be exactly what the police department's looking at, what state is looking at, and what the mayor's looking at, so won't be any discussion about who's got a number.
You talking about, Charlie, the number of officers we have?
No.
Are you talking about?
Yeah, I'm talking about that too.
Okay.
First of all, I'm talking about tickets.
Okay.
But we've asked for all that.
Okay.
Can we, Stacy, I know we have an ordinance in place, and, you know, and I know this is a little bit off topic, but still on topic, about speed bumps and stuff of that sort, can we go back and look at that, because if, if traffic is, is an issue, speeding, and I mean, there are a lot of people complaining about, they have, they swear their streets are drag race strips, people just zooming up and down.
They are.
And so, can we go back and look at that, I mean, is that a state mandate, or is that just...
I'll get with Audrey.
Audrey, you need to...
Hey, what...
About speed bumps?
Before we leave this, I got one question, so we see this person in the four-wheeler, and I say, maybe, can we call into the Star Watch Center, and see if there's any cameras that we can pursue them, you know, through cameras and go to the house, how would we go to there and say Eddie's riding one of these things, and we kind of get a picture of Eddie, and then we don't see him for a mile or two, but somebody picks him up on the camera and go into this house, can we go get, can we knock on the door and arrest Eddie?
Not really, you got to see him.
Well, we saw him, but then we, then we, the cameras saw him, so we told him where he went, I want to know how we gonna get him, because without being able to pursue him, we're never gonna get him.
We gotta do something, gotta have some kind of a rule, because this, it's a mess, somebody gonna get killed, or kill somebody else.
What's the correlation, so, if we're not gonna pursue them, because we're worried about the liability, because somebody, they could wreck or hurt somebody, or we could run in a third party and injure them, how do you handle somebody just robbed a convenience store, do we high-speed chase them, is that an exception?
There, when you're, when you're looking at the federal courts and how they look at the liability, and really, at this point, we're, we're talking about more the liability of an individual officer, it's whether they're acting in negligent, willful, wanton, intentional manner, and there are certain guidelines that, unfortunately, they do change, but that the courts set, that they look at, the speed, the road conditions, the weather, all that, the violation, is it a felony, is it a violent crime, is it a misdemeanor, a traffic ticket, because you do have, I mean, the courts have addressed fatalities when you're chasing somebody for speeding, and they wouldn't pull over, and all it is is speeding ticket, and the courts have said, that's not reasonable, so the officers are supposed to take all of that into consideration, and, you know, unfortunately, I think we all know, they have to do it within a split second, and that's why they have supervisors that are monitoring the call, and can instruct them to terminate the, the pursuit, if it becomes a situation that's gonna be dangerous, or will open up liability, and that's as much for the officer's protection as the city's protection.
Okay, number 10, that's a review, we'll have that at five o'clock, number 11. Number 11, just moving up, voting spot?
Yes, sir, the Huntington College let us know that Drum Theater will no longer be used as a voting precinct, so we're permanently moving it to the athletic center.
Number 12 is just strictly a, they're gonna, this is a waterworks facility, property on the Wazin Road for the, for the, what is it, the big distillery? Huh? Man, this is about man, so, it's a good deal. Number 13. Alright, this is where we allocate the money soon. Can you give us a thumbnail of this thing?
Sure. Um, so the, number 13 is, the county is going to transfer money to the city, if there's an intergovernmental agreement negotiated between the county and the city, and they would transfer their portion for these two programs, and, well, three programs really, but for these programs that are going to be housed at the city, this gets us to an obligation stage, so we can, you know, beat those deadlines that we're up against, so once it's moved, then we think we can count it as obligated, the programs will come back before the council to be approved, so right now, we're just housing the money at the city departments from the county, so that all the money is in one place, the next one, 14, is the same thing, except for the money's going in the other direction, so the, the county is gonna house the community restoration program at the finance department at the county, so the city will negotiate an intergovernmental agreement to transfer their portion of that program to the county, and then it will be housed at the county, and that program will come back before you, when the contract is, is prepared for that program too, so this is just an initial transfer money to one place, where it's gonna live, and then transfer it to the county where that program is gonna live.
I got some questions.
Okay.
When will we know something about these programs? I know it was, you know, we gave permission to go and look and research, and tell us what these programs gonna be, who gonna do them, how they gonna operate the whole of the program, so we can determine whether or not we really want to raise our hand and say, let's do that, when will we have that type of information?
We had a, we had a joint meeting between the county and the city in April, and some of the programs are more defined, and they explain those in that joint meeting, so the small business assistance program, the community restoration program, Carp Deck, what, you know, we bid those out, and the vendors have come back and have been preliminarily awarded, right, so we found two vendors for those programs, and then the hospital violence interruption program, I spoke about that, we put that out for bid, and we did not get a qualified bidder, so we're rebidding that out, we're gonna amend that, that RFP, and rebid that out, but that should be done probably in the next 30 days, to put that out and come back, so we do, we do have some outlines of what the programs are gonna do, and that was done in that joint meeting, but we're still gonna come back with a final, you'll still have another chance to vote on those programs, and they can be explained at that point too.
Yeah, and I think, I'm gonna ask, and I, I'm gonna ask that, you know, that information be made available, I missed that meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
And I thought, we don't vote in those meetings, so there's, there's no vote to say, okay, do a bid, but you say you had, you made it seem like as if, you know, at that meeting, we talked about it, we kind of moved on it, and that type thing, that's fine, but yes, if you would bring, I would like to have some information...
Absolutely.
From that, because I like to know kind of what we bided on those programs and where they are, and then my second question is, what, so I see, and I'm just wondering about being consistent across the board, where I see the county money... Well, I see the county money has been held with their county finance department, but our money is going in actually the economic development department. Why have we chosen a department and the county is using their finance department? What's, what's the difference there?
So they, that's where their rental assistance program was housed, and it's very similar. So there, that's the department that handled it at the county. We tried to, we asked the, you know, administrators which department would be best suited. So obviously, the violence prevention programs would be best suited for the office of violence prevention. And small business seemed like it should go in economic development. So that's how we chose those. The county is the same way. Their rental assistance program was handled by their finance department, and so it's a very similar type program. They, they have contractors that go out and do things and then they submit invoices and get paid. And so they, they felt like their county finance department was the best program, uh, best department for that program.
And so, but we don't have a set date on when we can look to really see these programs because, you know, when I see y'all, y'all be talking about deadline. But then we still saying, but we're gathering information, so do we have?
Well, now, we've got a vendor for small business, we've got a vendor for the community restoration, and we would have had a vendor for, uh, the HVIP, but we didn't feel like, we didn't feel like that vendor, the vendors that responded to that RFP were compliant in the sense that they hadn't handled that kind of funding before. So we, we were very protective of, you know, we want to get, uh, people that have handled large amounts of federal money to bid on these programs, and so we're going to try again.
So is the vendor for the small business.
So, um, Hope Credit Union has been given a, a conditional award for, uh, the small business assistance program. There's, there will still be a, uh, an RFP related to that that'll go out for some, well, some contracts that will go out for some very basic things, like a triage and a website and those kinds of things. But Hope Credit Union has been the, is the vendor that got preliminarily awarded. Now that contract and that program will come back before you before any money is spent.
Do we know how long it'll be before that contract is up and running?
Um, well, as soon as we can get it back before, the contract's negotiated and back before you, we need the money over there, uh, to also do that. So, so we're, we're doing it as fast as we can, but you know, we talk about compliance taking a long time. We, you know, it takes a while to get these things compliant and the contracts negotiated.
Wait, you need the money over there to get it done?
We don't, I mean, you don't have to do this today.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. You said that, but I wanted to make sure.
But, but, but there is different, there's a difference between expenditures and obligations. I know we've talked about that before. Having it obligated, we believe it will be obligated if it's in the departments, and it'll be expended when the contracts are done. So we're just trying to move another step down the road.
Susan, can you tell me what, what underwriting at Hope, what underwriting criteria they're going to use for these? Do, do we know that?
Um, they're going to use the, um, it's the, and, and I'm not 100% familiar with all the HUD regulations, but I think they're going to use the HUD Regulation Home Program, that underwriting, because that is.
For small business loans?
Yes, that, that's compliant with, um, that's compliant with, I'm sorry, I've got it backwards. The, um, community restoration program's going to use the home, it's going to use the home, home underwriting, sorry.
Okay, that makes sense.
The small business assistance program, they are a CD, um, FI, and so they're going to use the CDFI regulations to do that.
Okay.
And then, I'm sorry, there's one more, one more, Charlie. The broadband study and the sewer engineering, I wanted to let y'all know, that's just authorizing those contracts so that those can, can get done. Um, they're, they're ready to go. Um, and then the MOU, I wanted to also update you on the city and the county sending MOU to the Montgomery Water Works, uh, to get the main sewer stuff going, and they have sent us back a, an MOU with just a few technical changes, and we should have that resolved, um, very soon. So we're going to make those changes if they wanted, they weren't substantive, and then we should have an MOU ready for the sewer folks. And that means that we can then apply for the federal money, the state money, and on broadband and sewer.
Okay. Will y'all come back and let us know when we get those all done or send me an email?
Yes, we, we absolutely can do that.
The broadband to me is one of those situations, been going on for years. A lot of state money, federal money apparently involved, it's definitely, it hasn't moved, in my opinion, in the last 10 years. If somebody talks about it, it sounds good, but nothing happens.
Well, we need to get something going, don't we, Charlie?
We, I guess the city's going to push it. I mean, it, it's been sitting there at the state for years, talking about.
Yes.
And I think the state's already allocated money again on this.
They have, they have.
Who, who the state's going to do it? Anybody going?
So their money is, um, you know, it's going through ADECA, um, you know, the sewer money's going through ADM, and so we've met with ADECA and also ADM, and so we're, you know, we're getting ourselves in a position to receive whatever funding's out there.
Okay. All right. Government moves load on it.
Yes, it sure does. Thank you.
All right. Number 16.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I sent out an email, but, um, if we had some comments, but Mr. Darrell Washington is here, he'll come up and address that for me.
Yeah, Darrell.
Good evening, councilors. Uh, the resolution for item 16 is a part of the application process where we are seeking to become a Main Street designated community. It is a competitive process, and the resolution just simply states that the city council supports our efforts. Uh, once we become a designated community, it will bring grants as well as technical assistance and training, not only to the city, but to the city's small businesses. So this is part of the application.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
Okay. Number 17, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'm going to talk with the, the owners of all this application retailer if I can get some more details about it, and we'll, we'll talk about it at, at five o'clock.
Okay. Number 18.
Mr. President, I want to talk about it at the regular work session.
Okay.
Right on me.
Number 19. Glenn?
It's okay.
It's okay?
Yes, sir.
Number 20, same thing. Mr. Mitchell?
Quick start. Yes, sir.
Cast session, yes, it's okay.
It's okay. 21. Mr. Gavin?
Oh, I'm, I'm fine with that.
You're good, okay. 22 and 23 are four of us of the council members. Number 24, hair and down. Okay, all right. Let's see who we got wants to talk to us. Okay, Ms. Regina Davis or Ms. Walker to talk to us about Pilgrim Rest Baptist Church Senior Regina Davis, Ms. Walker, you here? Pilgrim Rest Senior.
Well, yeah, he's out there. And I was going to say, uh, Mr. President, I, I'm not sure where they are. Uh, I see Burkett out there, so I'm not sure if they're out there with him or not, but, um, I did have an opportunity to speak with them.
Yeah.
Um, and they're trying to do a program for the seniors. The seniors tend to enjoy dressing. Here come, uh, call for me, yeah, they, here they come walking in.
Regina Davis, Ms. Walker.
Well, they're here, and the Burkets are here in support of them. I don't know if they're here.
Yeah, he, he's, he's sent an email out.
Chief Butler, you want to speak about the senior prom? You come up.
Uh, Ms. Walker or Regina Davis? Pilgrim Rest Baptist Church?
Well, Zach Butler is, uh, the treasurer.
Ms. Walker. You've been signed.
Well, she is. Okay, there she goes.
Ask her, okay.
Okay.
I already made the conversation.
Right here, Ms. Walker.
Ms. Walker, you going to sneak this?
Oh, yeah, you sign up and talk about it. Senior prom, that you'll be attending.
And you got Council Burkett, sir? Mr. Burkett, good seat today. Senator Burkett, sorry.
Excuse us. Senator.
Anyway, y'all wanted to speak on this item? Apparently not.
They're going to speak, Mr. President.
Who wants to talk, y'all want to talk about Pilgrim Rest Senior Prom?
Yes, yes.
We're listening to you.
Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am, cool.
Hi, how are you? Good evening, Mayor Reed and all city council members.
I don't see Mayor Reed.
Hi.
I don't see Mayor Reed.
He's not here? Y'all caught me off guard, okay? My name is Regina Davis. I'm the activities coordinator for Pilgrim Rest Senior Center, 1550 East Washington Street, Montgomery, Alabama, 36107. Uh, that is, we are located in District 6, that's Ms. Johnson's district. Our senior center has planned a Silver Senior Prom extravaganza for all senior citizens in Montgomery and surrounding areas. I'm here with my center director, Ms. Sandra Walker, Ms. Daisy Bolden from Central Alabama Aging, our senior aide, Ms. Diana Hudson, as well as the honorable Mr. David Burkett and his wife, uh, Ms. Linda Burkett. Um, the purpose of the Silver Senior Prom extravaganza is, it's a daytime social event for all seniors aged 50 and older. The prom will provide musical entertainment, a hot catered meal, photos, dancing, the crowning of kings and queens, door prizes, gifts and awards. This event will be held on July 21st, 2023, at the Alcozar Shrineers Temple in Montgomery, Alabama, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. This event will allow all of our amazing senior citizens the opportunity to celebrate summer and socialize with like minds, as well as make unforgettable memories with family and friends. Our goal is to make the prom free of charge for up to 400 senior citizens, many whom are with, um, Central Alabama Aging, as well as other seniors in the area. It is our hope that this wonderful Silver Senior Prom extravaganza will become an important annual event in the city. We are asking each city council person for a $500 sponsorship, who will list, which will list you on our co-sponsorship signage that will be prominently displayed, and a $100 full-page ad in the sponsor book. We are respectfully asking, requesting additional support by asking you to include this event flyer on your social media platforms. We are also extending an invitation to Mayor Reed and each of the nine city council members to come and represent your district and city at this great event, which is designed to highlight all of our senior citizens. The motto we have at our Pilgrim Rest Senior Center is caring for those who once cared for us, our senior citizens. Uh, the project, the projected cost of this endeavor, the senior citizen prom, will be $14,000. We are in need of the city council's help to make this event successful. We thank you in advance for your support, and we would also like to thank Ms. Marsha Johnson, the honorable Ms. Marsha Johnson, for all of her continued and constant support of Pilgrim Rest Senior Center. Thank you so much.
Thank y'all.
Charlie?
Yeah.
David, how many, how many years have you, you start, you started this, didn't you? David started this.
I've been doing it for 17 years.
17 years.
That sounds like $1,700, Counselor Cora.
Huh?
That sounds like $1,700.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, thank y'all.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Already helping you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Lord, Mr. Big, you here?
Charlie, do we know who that check goes to for the senior citizens?
It goes to senior, to Pilgrim Rest.
Is that where it goes?
Yeah, I think. You've got a problem, you know?
I'll double-check it, but I, there, there's a vendor that we send it through to find out which it is.
Okay, yeah, okay. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everyone. Mr. General.
Yes, sir.
Are you aware that May is the month that the nation is looking to turn awareness toward mental health?
Yes, I am.
Are y'all aware of that?
I am.
Well, I had the privilege of being hired by DHR to help a young man get ready to step out of DHR into adult life. He aged out in January 29, 2003. They did everything they knew over 19 years, and when they hired me, they said, we are hiring you because we know that what you do is different from what we do. So I worked with him for two years. And he aged out on January 29th. He got his last check from DHR, which was $800, and within 10 days, the $800 was gone. He was living in a hotel four months prior to aging out. And so after those 10 days, he was out, and it was on the coldest night of the, of the year. And the reason why it's so vivid to me is because it was Super Bowl weekend. And so he called and asked for help. I asked him how much money did he have? He said he had $29. I said, I'll bring you $31 so that you can have one more night to get on your face before Almighty God and ask for wisdom. Ended up being two nights. It, it ended up being two weeks in my house. And when I saw that he was not going to obey the rules of the house, I said, you've got to go. And I took him to the police department and told him, I wanted him out of my car because he's not coming back to my house. They came and got him out of my car, and listen carefully now. They said, but you can't put him out. They told me that he's a resident of your house. I said, oh, no, he's not. They said, oh, yes, he is. I said, oh, no, he's not. He was a resident of the hotel for four months. I just stepped up to help him. And I'm just telling you now, we need, I, I need some help. Help, help, help. Other citizens and other seniors need help in these situations when they call the police department, which I did for 45 consecutive days with him breaking into my house. 45 consecutive days. And the policemen would tell me over and over that we cannot go next door and get him because I didn't have a restraining order. At that time, I did not know what a restraining order was. I've never gone through anything like this before. And I tried all I could to get a restraining order from the police department and the sheriff's office. And I finally found out that there's no such thing in Alabama as a restraining order. And it wasn't, trust me. And it wasn't until today, when I finally asked Sheriff Cunningham, I said, is there such a thing? He said, yes, if the judge gives it. And so I got two restraining orders that the police still did not respect, because in essence, it never gave the details of a restraining order. And all I'm saying is, help, please help, because somebody's going to get hurt, somebody may get killed over something that could have been avoided. Can you help us? Can you all help us?
You got a problem?
Is he violent?
Yes.
Have you, have you went and received a protection from abuse?
I've received everything you can imagine.
Well, that has the detail that said he has to be removed from the house in it.
Well, see, he's out of my house.
Okay.
But he found a vacant house next door, which he was living in, and when I leave, he breaks into my house to shave and eat my food and do everything he wants to do in my house. Now, this is a true story, and I'm bringing it up in connection with what? This is Mental Health Awareness Month, and the problem, the solution to the problem is not putting him in jail, but getting him some mental health.
Thank you for the information. We, we all understand what you get. Thank you. Time is up.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, council, that concludes the work session. We'll reconvene in 10 minutes for the regular meeting.